Hi, good evening and welcome to the school committee meeting of Tuesday, November 28th, 2023. I'd like to welcome everyone and call the meeting to order. Just coming out of an executive session, actually, and timely tonight, and we start all our meetings with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Now, I'll share the reading of the Wakefield Public Schools' mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident, lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of their community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Is there anyone in the studio that has public comment that could just come up to the table? Or is there anyone on with us on Zoom? I don't see anyone in the studio. And no one on Zoom. Great. Do we have an update for Lauren? You want to join us for our student advisory council? Hi.
Hello.
Welcome.
Well, this week, we had our winter sports tryouts, so those are still ongoing. We also had 45 students from Wakefield audition for the Northeast District Senior Music Festival. And out of over 900 students from Northeast Massachusetts, we had 18 students who will participate in the festival chorus band and orchestra. And two weekends ago, we had our performances of Descendants, which filled the auditorium every performance, and it was a really great show I went. We also had our pep rally last Wednesday, which was a lot of fun, pretty good tug-of-war. Seniors pulled through on that one, and some very eventful piings in the face of some teachers and administrators. So that was definitely a good way to end the week before our break.
Students did an amazing job emceeing that, you know? It was great to see the students running that. It was great.
Are the emcees here?
I think, I think so, yeah. Did a, you did a great job.
Does anyone have any questions, Lauren? No? Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion for the consent agenda?
We do. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the November 14th, 2023 school committee meeting, and accept the minutes of the November 16th, 2023 School Committee Student Services Subcommittee meeting, and the November 21st, 2023 School Committee Policy and Communications Subcommittee meeting as presented.
Second.
Our motions were made and seconded. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor? None opposed? Passed unanimously. Thank you. The floor goes to Dr. Lyons.
Thank you very much. Tonight, we have, we welcome our fall extracurricular activity groups and our fall athletes. I'd like to welcome Tom Bankert up with members of the marching band to talk about their fall season, which was amazing. Just, it was just spectacular.
Oh, yeah, everyone can come up. I don't know if they can, the people at home that are watching can see, we have, we have some guests in the audience today.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for inviting us. We're proud to be here tonight to talk about our season. Before I begin talking about that, you're going to hear from about a lot of other successful seasons. It was a really successful fall for Wakefield athletics in particular. So I want to congratulate all those teams, and, you know, they've made the school community really proud and the town really proud. In particular, behind, behind me, Candace Spencer, I feel like her and I have been at this together forever, but it's really great to see the dance team have such growth and such success. You know, her and I go at a step, step together all the time, so it's really great to see us being successful at the same time, so huge congratulations to the dance team. So I'm here with a few members of my senior, senior leadership team. On my left is Hayden Quimby, who's the front ensemble section leader. Right next to me is Lila Hathaway, who's a trumpet section leader, and then all the way down the end is Lauren Mangarelli, who is our drum major. I'm going to let them start. They have a few things to say, go quick, and then I have a couple of things to add at the end. So we will start with Lila.
Hi, I'm Lila Hathaway. I wanted to talk about our season before we went to BOA, which was kind of the conclusion of our season. So we started off with band camp, two weeks of very intense marching band training and just learning everything and teaching the new people, you know, the ways of the band. And it was a lot of fun this year, I think especially, we had such a great group. And being a senior, it was really special to see the leadership really taking charge and helping all the rookies find their place in the band. Unfortunately, throughout the season, we had a lot of our shows rained out, but I think we really, as a community, we recovered and we really stayed positive, I think, is what really brought us through that. And there were a lot of setbacks through that, but I think through leaning on each other and keeping up our hope, we really were able to have a successful season and have, for the seniors at least, have a great last season.
So our BOA trip, I thought, was such an amazing experience to have. Got to spend so much time with friends. We got to see an amazing Broadway production in New York. But more importantly, we were able to, you know, put out the work we've been putting on for so many months. And going into prelims, we were a little worried. I was a little anxious myself because we did have a lot of shows rained out, but in the end, we made it to finals. We had so much energy, felt quite motivated, and we came 10th. And we had a nice bus ride home, six hours on midnight, very fun. That's not really nice, surprisingly. And came back the next day with our microfinals, we got a perfect score.
So I'm going to talk about Nezba finals, which was, other than Thanksgiving, like our last day of band, I think especially for the seniors, definitely emotional day. I can confirm that for myself, a lot of tears, but I think we were all pretty excited, nervous, feeling all the emotions. But we had worked so hard and we were ready to put everything we had on that field, and we did. And our hard work paid off, and we came home with this big trophy. And it was just a really awesome way to end the season. I wouldn't have won it any other way.
So I, you know, we, you heard, you heard it here, it was a really up and down season, especially weather-wise, really put some kinks into what we were doing, but there was definitely, you know, students had to really persevere through that, and they did a great job and kind of peaked at the right, peaked at the right moment. I just, you know, I need to thank our, you know, we have a tremendous staff as part of the marching band. In particular, we have seven staff members that are alumni of the program, that went through the program with me, and it's so great that they get to come back and give back to the current students and be a part of, part of that process. None of this possible without our parents, who load the truck, unload the truck, load instruments, load equipment, provide lunches, do everything they can do to make sure that we're successful both at home and on the road. And then the community is, is, is really supportive here in Wakefield. You know, before we went to Bands of America down in Rutgers, we had a, a community performance, which in the past has been, you know, mostly our parents and some, and some people here and there. The stands were, Landry Inn was packed for that performance on that Wednesday night. It was, it was like an ama, it was an amazing thing to see. I think the kids couldn't believe it. I couldn't believe it. It was just great to see the support of the community far and wide come out and support these kids who, you know, work really hard. You know, these, you know, the, the biggest thing with, with marching band is that there, we, we don't have any bench, you know? It's 80 starters. Like, there are 80 kids in the band and they're all starting. You know, you don't, you don't get to take a breath, you don't get to take a breather, you don't, like, everyone is expected and held accountable to each other and to themselves. And whether it's an eighth grader who is in, out there for the first time, or it's a featured, you know, senior soloist, like, there's no hiding on the field. And so they're all out there all the time doing their thing, and that's what makes it so successful, is that they're accountable to themselves, they're accountable to the staff, and they're accountable to each other. And, you know, they truly are a family. And I'm glad that these seniors get a chance to kind of, you know, share their experiences with you tonight, and it's, you know, it was a great year, so. We appreciate being able to share that with you as well.
Can you talk a little bit, or can you share with the committee what it was like at the end of the championship when the team got together in the center of the field?
So, you know, we have a, we have a tradition at the end of shows to go to the center and, whether it's a first place or a third place or whatever place they get, and just go out and, and get together, you know, they just sing and dance a little bit, and then they get back on the buses and go. At championships, the New England championships, not only did we get the trophy over there, every kid got individual medals. And it kind of became this, like, impromptu thing where I just gave, they all wanted their medals there, so we, every kid got their medal. I really kind of expected it to be, once, once they got their medal, they kind of would go back and hang with their friends and, you know, but every single person stayed and cheered, every single person getting, like, 80 kids through a line, getting their medal. For some, some really enjoyed it, some were embarrassed, more embarrassed than I could imagine, but, but it was, it was just like, it was an impromptu thing that was like, definitely something that I will never forget, and I don't think they will either. It was pretty, it was pretty fun.
Awesome.
Does anyone have any questions? Go ahead, Stephen.
Just a comment, you guys are fantastic. I'm a, I'm a band kid, love the band. Your shows are amazing, every time this year, just everything from the soloists to your movements together. It's hard where we sit, I think we sit a little bit lower, I have to tell my kid, we need like a more aerial view so we can see all of like the, the movement and all like shapes, the forms. But it's, it's, you can see it from the, from the field or from the stands, sort of how well you work together. And I can hear it from my house, I know you put in like 12-hour days, 16-hour days, it's amazing how much dedication you put into it. And you're, and like you say, you're there for each other. So just sort of, thank you for, for bringing that to our community, for being a part and for sticking in it so long. I know it can't be easy, but I hope the payoff was worth it, just, and not just in the trophy and the experiences and the memories you have. Thank you.
Thank you. Got you.
Just two, want to kind of echo what Stephen said. Congratulations, of course. Being an alum, this has always been an incredibly strong program, and so it's particularly prideful for me that it's continued under Mr. Bankert and, of course, all of you that have made it happen. And I think it was during the summer, I think it was maybe towards the end of band camp, we invited us up, and so we were there kind of watching. So to see that early phase and kind of sneak around some of the comments being made by the coaches, to then, this incredible production at the end was just so special, and it was amazing for me to see it. I can't imagine what it was like to be a part of it, but just congratulations. I hope that these are memories that are going to last. On Sunday coming up, a group of us, again, like our old theater teachers bringing us together 30 years later. So hopefully, these are connections that you're going to have forever. It's certainly been the case for my class, that the music departments always stayed together, so hopefully, this isn't the end of the road for all of you who are graduating, but, you know, wonderful memories to have, and that will continue, hopefully, for a lifetime regardless of where you go. So congratulations.
So you've been doing this for a while, and, you know, you're all seniors, so, you know, you've, you've been doing this for a while. Did you get a sense early on in the season or during the summer that this was going to be the special year? Like, you know, I know you've been, like, we've, we've coached this for so long, I'm sure, you know, and I'm sure every season, you're going to have certain expectations. Was there a moment in this season where you thought that this is where it was going to end up, that it was going to be this successful?
Honestly, I, I, I thought it was going to be a up season. You know, it, it's the, the, you know, you look at it like a, like a football game, right? Like, you spend a week of practice, you go out, you play the game, win or lose, you watch tape, you get feedback, and then you work on it for the next week. We weren't able to do that for weeks because everything was getting rained out. I've been here 16 years. In 16 years, we've hosted 28 shows here in Wakefield. This year was the first year it was ever rained out. In my years here, we've had, I think, I think I counted four total shows in 16 years rained out. We had three this year. So it was just, it was really tough to get any momentum going. And they're not, you know, they felt it, like, it was, it was, it's hard. It's hard to do that. You work so hard, you want to go get the performance in, get the game in, and then go back and, you know, take your feedback and work through when they weren't getting that opportunity. So it was, it was tough. It was, it was a tough beginning of the season. Luckily, they stuck to it, and then I think the week of, we went down to Rutgers, that Saturday before, we had a, we had a show. And then we had that performance for the community, which was great. And then they went down to prelims at Rutgers and were great. And then that same day, they had to go again, and it was better. Then they came back after six hours on a bus with four hours of sleep, performed a microfinals, and it was better. It was like, it was peaking at the right time. So once we got down to Rutgers, I figured, I, I kind of figured it was going to, it was peaking at the right time, but it was a tough year. It was really tough for all that, but they fought through, like, great perseverance. Yeah, for sure.
So Tom, repeat?
Sure. Well, certainly, you know, our congratulations, it's, it is, it's such an understatement, but congratulations for your hard work and your quality representation. You are, you are Wakefield, right? Wakefield pride is, is, is sitting right in front of us, and it really makes all the, the, the work that we do to try to support what you do even that much more rewarding. It's a shame that it's such a small little trophy. I think you're getting ripped off on the trophy, just we should pass that along to Nezba. You know, one of the things that, that came to mind as you were each, as you were each, each talking was what you're describing to us tonight and to the community is a love story. That's, that's what hit me. The love of, 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 of the work you do, the love of the, of the, and the passion, the love you have for each other, and the care. I mean, that's what you've described, and it's nothing but impressive. You guys are awesome. Congratulations.
I'm going to sound repetitive, but I'll say some of the same things anyways. First of all, you guys were amazing. I'm at a front seat and seeing many of your shows and all the hard work. And one of the things that impressed me the most is just seeing how the, the older kids like yourselves really took the rookies under your wings and kind of led them and kind of just acted as, as leaders as much as the awesome staff that was there, and that was really impressive to me. The other thing that I found impressive was just, you go down to a place like Norwood, and I looked it up, and they have a population similar to Wakefield, and their marching band seemed minuscule compared to ours. So it just kind of shows just how, you know, how well-established our program is. I know a lot of that credit goes to you and our staff, Tom, for all the hard work you put in in recruiting new, new kids. And I know it's not just marching band, you have winter percussion and winter guard and all the other things that help feed into the program, but just wanted to say again without sounding repetitive, congratulations.
So I had the good fortune this year of being able to get a little close to the band while they were preparing and actually hearing Tom coach the musicians and coach the performers. And, and I don't know if the students want to say anything about this, but from my perspective, from my perspective, I thought it was amazing. I thought that he, Tom, I thought you did a great job just like putting it in perspective for kids, right? Like, like pushing away the nerves, really getting them to focus on the performance, and just, just like have fun with it, right? Is, is that pretty close, you think?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Awesome. Awesome. So I, thank you so much. It's a, it's, it's amazing for us to have, to be able to watch all that you've done this year, so.
Appreciate it. And like I said, and like I said at the beginning, like, it, so much of it goes to the kids, but, you know, we have so many great coaches in the fall that they're, they're the reason why we have these players behind us that are here and are helping all of our kids be so successful. Like, we're really lucky to have the quality of adults with our kids in this setting. And that's, you know, a big, you know, kudos to Brendan for his hiring, but then also for all our coaches for caring, really caring about the kids in Wakefield. As a parent in Wakefield, you know, I don't know what my kids are going to do, but I know that if they never touch, step foot in my band, wherever they go, they're going to have the adult support they need to be successful, and so that's, it's, it's good to know. So, thank you.
Thank you.
If you want to, we're having people and visitors sign our sign that's on the table. If you'd like to sign that, you might just shake the pens a little, trying to fill it up. It was supposed to be a town day, but town day never happens.
It getting rained out?
Yeah, it got rained out.
Didn't everything?
Yeah, so if you could just, you can draw a picture, you can do whatever you'd like.
While you guys are signing, I was just curious, do you want me to know what your plans are for next year?
Does anyone know?
Not formally, but I'm hoping to pursue actuarial science definitely. I'm not a track team, so that's still in the works, but that's a hopeful.
I'm also not sure where I'm going to end up right now, but my plan is to go to college and major in political science.
Not sure I'm going to go yet, but hope to study civil engineering. That's something I wanted to do since I was a kid, so I'm very excited for that.
Thank you.
That's great.
I'd love to go back to college.
In a minute.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Next, we have the really great, good fortune to welcome up our members of our dance team, right? And I think that we're going to have to expand our trophy case, it looks like. Brendan Kent is kind of doing double duty tonight. He was going to be here, but he, he got pulled away for another assignment.
All right. First, I want to thank you guys for having us here tonight to recognize all of the accomplishments of the team this season. I also want to say congrats to all of the other teams. It has been an amazing fall season with so many teams doing so well. I also want to say congrats to the band. Tom and I get to spend every Friday night together in the stands, and nothing makes us happier to see them excel. And we want to give a additional special thanks to volleyball, who we shared the gym with. What an amazing run they also had this season. Couldn't ask for better supporters to hang out in the gym with. I also want to thank my assistant coach, Alex Nathan, who couldn't be here, and recognize our other cap, captain Paige Daly, who also couldn't be here tonight. Sitting with me is Caroline Garside, our other captain, who in a few moments will give you a quick little recap of some of our, you know, more major things that happened this season. But we also want to thank the athletic department, all the faculty and the staff, all the administration. We are so well-loved and so supported, which is amazing, because when I speak to some of my other colleagues, dance is not always recognized in other school districts the way that it is here, and it's amazing that everybody pretty much has our back all the time, which is great. A lot of people don't realize what we do. For the most part, everybody typically sees us at the football games, which is fun, we love a good halftime show, but most of what we spend our season on is getting ready to compete. We went to six different competitions this season, started with the third weekend in October and finished up at states the Saturday before Thanksgiving. Similar to band, everybody has a role on dance team. We have a JV and a varsity team, and everybody gets to compete, which is great. Nobody's necessarily riding the bench. And one of the things that I love about dance team is this particular style, which is exploding at the collegiate level and now starting to explode at the high school level. Everybody really has to be able to pull their own weight. The way that the, the score sheets work out and the way that we're judged, especially when we get to states, is it's not just can a few kids do the hard stuff? Can the entire team go out there and execute everything from visuals to quality of movement to difficult skills, and can they work as a team and feed off of each other? And I think there's no greater lesson that these kids can learn while they're in high school than really just being part of a team and what that takes to get it done. We had a great season. Every single time we competed, our scores went up. We have had many years within the past six or seven years where we've been the state runner-up, and then finally this year, we got it done, and we were named state champs. So Caroline's just going to go through, read a couple of our highlights from this season.
Yeah, thank you. So to begin our season, we started in the summertime and we attended a dance camp, UDA Dance Camp. And here, we had four of my teammates, our girls, we were named UDA All-American Dancers, and it was Emma Burns, Danica Marchino, and Captain Paige Daly, and myself, Caroline Garside. And as well, our, we performed two team routines, and we received the highest ribbon that you could get there as well. And so, like Candace had mentioned earlier, we competed at several competitions this season, scoring higher every time, which was our goal, to get better and better each time. And so our JV teams, they finished out their season with first place in both their JV hip-hop routine and their JV pom routine at the New England Cheer and Dance Invitational. And all year, Varsity had an amazing season too, scoring in the top three places for both their pom and hip-hop at all, all of our competitions. And at the Endicott Dance Competition, we even got a best choreography award this year. And then to end our season, we ended off at states, and our Varsity pom was lucky enough to get third place, which is very good. And then our Varsity hip-hop, we ended up becoming the state champs for the first time in program history, which was really exciting for all of us, and yeah, a really big moment.
Yeah, I would say so.
I love that you can recount this so accurately with such a big smile. It's like you're still enjoying it, so it's, it's super fun to listen to.
That big smile is what keeps everybody going, when we're hitting a six-day-a-week schedule.
How many dances do you compete in?
So our JV team, they always compete in pom and hip-hop. In Varsity, this year, we learned three dances, hip-hop, pom, and jazz, but at most of our competitions, we competed our hip-hop and pom routines.
So the state rules only allow us to compete in two genres at any given time? So typically, we learn three varsity routines for competition purposes, and then heading into states, we pick the two that we feel we're going to do the best with. But that's also in addition to these girls learning five different halftime routines, and then Varsity learns three competition routines and JV learns two. So it's a lot in a 15-week season. It's pretty impressive what they do.
Yeah, it is.
On top of dancing for their studios, our team has a GPA average of a 3.87. They're in honors and AP classes. To be honest, I'm not really sure when they sleep, so.
Does anyone have any questions?
Just want to kind of echo what I said earlier, just congratulations on representing, I think, yourselves but as well as the town so well. I work at a college and dance, the dance team's very active there as well, and so I know what hip-hop is, but can you describe pom? I think I know what it is, but I'm not 100% sure.
You want to explain?
It's similar to jazz in a way, where we have all of our turns, all of our skills and tricks, but we perform like with palms, and it includes a lot of, like, sharp, really sharp pom motions in it, and really cool visuals with, that we create with the palms, and yeah.
Cool. That's awesome. Thank you. Well, congratulations, and what year are you?
I'm a senior this year.
A senior, okay. So, great way to end your term here. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations. Go ahead, Tom.
So certainly, obviously, a, congratulations too, it's just, it's just incredibly impressive. How many girls are on the team, are on the dance team?
So this year, we had 28. So this year, we had twenty-eight girls on the team. Um, twenty competed in varsity hip-hop. We had sixteen compete in varsity palm and varsity jazz. And then our JV palm team consisted of ten kids, and our JV hip-hop team consisted of eight.
Wow, I mean, those are impressive numbers too. How, how long is a, is a routine, is a performance, an individual?
So most of the game routines are about a minute and a half.
Okay.
Um, and then all the competition routines have to come in anywhere between a minute and forty-five and two minutes and five seconds.
So even being able to perform something that, in that short period of time, is incredibly impressive. I mean, imagine the, I can only imagine the amount of work that goes into getting it with such, uh, precision and accuracy, and it's, it's just, I mean, I've, I've seen your, your performances at halftime and other, other shows, but it's just incredibly impressive. And, um, you, you talk about this being the, the first, uh, you know, state championship. Uh, and it's, it's really, obviously, because of the, of the, the work and the, and the heart and soul that, that your team puts into it. It's, it has been building, and it, it will, it will continue to build. How many juniors do you, do you have? What's next year's leadership looking like? Oh, good. That's awesome. Well, congratulations again to all the, to everyone involved. Your parents, obviously, must be incredibly proud. You make the, the community incredibly proud. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks for coming.
They don't get tired carrying the trophies around. Next up, we're welcoming, um, members of our volleyball team.
I apologize for the Patriots. I just came from basketball tryouts. I coached basketball too. They're still going. We're looking strong.
Are you apologizing because of our season, or?
Yeah.
Oh, both, both. They tire and luckily.
I like the Patriots. I didn't know what the apology was.
We did much better than the Patriots this year, which is a surprise, you know? Usually, times have changed. We flip flops. We flip flops. Um. Um, well, thank you so much for having us here. It's obviously an honor. I know this is a, um, a huge deal to come here. I teach at the Woodville, so I know this is something that I've been wondering if I'd ever do, and so being here is really special. Um, and congratulations to everyone. I'm super proud. I love seeing some familiar faces that I know. And, um, again, like, I know I share, share with the dance team a lot, and they actually came and performed at our, um, game, which was really special, 'cause that hadn't been something that we had seen before, and so they, um, asked if they could come, and it was just really cool to see the community's support. Um, I'm gonna have two of my captains. The third is a basketball player, Savannah Cummings, so shout out to her. She's a senior. She's amazing, huge part of our success this year. Um, but do you just wanna introduce yourselves, and then I'll talk about a little bit of stuff, and then you can talk about the history of this year?
Hi, I'm Leah Crangelo. I'm a senior captain.
I'm Maddie Coman. I'm also a senior captain.
Um, so this is my fourth year here, and just looking at the growth of the program, and these are my first group of seniors that's gone throughout the four years. Um, just absolutely blown away by their leadership and understanding and belief of the program, and kinda who we are, and, um, what we've been trying to build, and they're a huge reason for our success this year. We went to the final four, um, for the first time in program history. We're really close. Um, you know, it was very recent, so it's very exciting still. I just, um, can't get over just the commitment level that they have given, and just how much it takes, especially with volleyball. It's such a team sport. There's not one person who can carry the team. Um, it's very, a very selfless sport, a very, like, you have to communicate. You have to do, um, things as a unit to be successful, and they just totally were able to take that on. And as captains this year, have made it, um, seamless going into that fourth year, and just seeing, um, that was really, really cool. I think too, going from my first year to now, the community's support has been just unbelievable. It just makes me speechless, even re-watching the film, and everything has been amazing to see the stands fill up compared to what it was. And I think that was a huge part of why we were successful, as well as just having that momentum and, um, positive energy from the community. I know I saw that from like the athletic department. I saw that, like, our training staff is amazing. Sue, um, I don't know if she watches these, but she's just the best, um, our trainer, and, um, all of those pieces, especially with my coaching staff as well. Um, they couldn't be here today, but I just think we have the best of the best, um, in all levels supporting us. So I just am really grateful for that. Um, but I'll let you guys talk about just specifics from this season that we accomplished.
Yeah, so we had a lot of firsts this season. Um, very historic for us. This is our best season to date. Um, a lot of first wins over the schools in our league, including Arlington, Wuber, and Danvers. And we took Melrose to five sets for the first time ever, which was huge. Um, we obviously hosted all the way up to, um, Sweet Sixteen, which was just crazy, again, seeing everyone packing this, the crowd. It was huge. It was awesome having dance there. Um, seventeen and eight record. We've never, ever done that well, literally ever. And so I think just, we could only have six people on the court at, at a time, and so having those six people really stand up and stand out like that is huge, and having the people on the bench there supporting was really helpful. And everyone pulled their weight in. I don't know.
Um, coming into tryouts this year, our coach would constantly like comment on, like, we have so much height, we have so many available positions, like, everyone can do everything, like, there are so many options that we have here to make us become successful. And I think our teammates, just the whole family of, of our team, just really us all bonding together and coming together and working like a unit, really helped us, take us as far as we went this year to the final four, which is still crazy. And just, I couldn't have asked, we couldn't have asked in the seniors. Um, this was just an amazing group of people to play with for our last year here, and we hope that, like, they take the program and the next years to win some hard work for us in the finals.
They'll definitely carry it on.
Yeah.
Putting some pressure on them.
I like pressure. It's good. I also wanna give a huge shout-out, obviously, to W-Captains here. Um, Brian McCorby specifically has went to every game, just, um, volunteering time and hours and sending me messages and like emails after, and gave me a moment to kinda think about the game from like another person's perspective. And a lot of the time, it was, you know, similar to, like, we have very similar coaching styles, I think. So it's, it's nice kinda seeing, um, and just getting those messages, and just that outside community was really, really cool to see. Um, and I think on top of it all, we do mental practice together, um, before regular practice. And so the girls are there for a long time at the gym, and that might consist of me do, making them do like really ridiculous team bonding things, um, just to get that chemistry with volleyball. Or we might be like reading an article and talking about like, you know, coaches always say like, be mentally tough, and it's like, how do you do that? Um, how are you mentally tough? And so we talked about like strategies and things like that that you can utilize, and, you know, I've seen all athletes, I've played on a lot of teams, and you have some kids who like really buy into that, and it's a choice, like, do you wanna believe what we're doing as a group? Or do you wanna like say, yeah, sure, with this article, you know, and I think this group just totally like bought in, and like, starting with the captains, being like, alright, like, yes, like, let's do the strategy, and thinking of like the laces. I don't know, like, the little things that we did, like, they started, you know, the, I'm the messenger, but like, the, the captains needed to help the group buy into that, and they really did. And I think that came down to how impressed I was with playoffs, because as we said, we've never been there before. They were cool as a cucumber. Like, I, I inside was like, oh my gosh, like, you know, but I have to keep my cool. And so they, I was just so impressed with them and their age, and, um, experiencing all the way up to the Elite Eight at home, being so composed. Um, and it just was really awesome to watch. I was so proud of them. I'm so honored to coach you guys.
And I think just like, this, I've been on so many different teams, whether it's soccer, basketball, now volleyball. But this is the most bonded I've ever been with a team, and I've been on a team where I've made seven of my lifelong friends. And I don't, like, I have a family now. This is not just seven people. It's like sixteen, and I think that's huge. Now, you can't really get that experience. You can't that, you can't get that with a coach. It's very rare to see that. And we really, we really have a family now, and it's just, it's gonna keep growing.
And, um, our team is like on the younger side, and so there's a good amount of sophomores. I don't know exactly the number, but eight sophomores? And then, and then five seniors and some juniors. And it's like, back to what Maddie said about the family. If I see a sophomore in the hallway, I'm not just like, oh, sophomores. Like, I'll go up to them, I'll be like, hi, like, how's your day going? Because I've played with them for the past three months, and we've trained, and we've worked so hard to get to where we were. And when you spend so many hours with people throughout the week, really trying to like, with all that passion for the sport, and really trying to each, to reach the end goal, it's really like you build a connection with all of these girls. And like Maddie said, it's really become a big family, and I think I'll remember these like relationships and connections I have with these girls forever.
Can you share where you're heading next year? Any idea yet?
Um, I don't entirely know exactly where I'm going yet. I know that I've applied to some schools near here, but then some also in some southern states. But the goal is to continue to play volleyball in college if it's available, but still not a hundred percent sure yet.
I'm going to college, that's all I know. It's literally it.
Do you guys wanna share your honors of what you received for volleyball?
Oh yeah, this was huge for accomplishments for us. I made league all-star. Savannah, who couldn't be here, she received, um, what was it?
Final four tournament team.
Yeah, all-four tournament team. And Leah made all-state team with one thousand assists. It's pretty crazy. Crazy.
And that, that all-state, um, award, it goes to the top one percent of volleyball players in Massachusetts. It's just, 'cause I remember I told you, and she was like, that sounds awesome. What's that? Um, and it's a bunch of coaches that vote. We go on a call, and you have to vote for specific players, um, and so it was cool. I obviously am biased, and I think you guys are the best, but it's really cool to see the other coaches, um, see their hard work pay off. Um, both these girls were on the freshman team their freshman year, and absolutely, I think they're some of the biggest freshman growth from freshman to seniors, obviously, in the season. So it's really impressive. You have big shoes to fill. The, or the people coming in have big shoes to fill because of you guys.
Well, isn't there, they started at Galvin, so you'll have more of a future for them.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, for sure.
Do you do any work with the younger athletes?
Oh yeah, we've done so many clinics. And a lot of the freshmen, I think, we're finally starting to see the clinics kinda pay off. We're seeing some of those freshmen that went to the clinics, and it definitely helped for quite a few of them. It, like, freshman year, had we had that, it would have been completely different. Um, but yeah, they're really growing, and they're gonna build the program for the future.
And it's so interesting seeing like town-wide and even like worldwide or like countrywide, that kids starting in middle school are starting to join like outside of their home, like town, teams, and they're starting to go to club teams and play sports like that. Like, me and Maddie didn't start playing club until our soph- like sophomore year, but now kids are starting in seventh, thirtieth grade or even lower. And it's just crazy, because like freshmen coming in this year were already so advanced and so ready to play, that like our freshman year, we were like, what, what's volleyball?
Whoa.
And so it's just, I'm excited to see how far this program can come in the future.
Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I haven't, no.
Yeah.
What you're describing is, is, uh, you know, some of the themes that, that you're describing are sort of hitting home a little bit, if I may share. Uh, my daughter was in the class of 2020, was a, was a volleyball player. And these are the types of things that I can remember watching as a parent, seeing the game or having her bring home. So it, it's terrific to see four years later, um, you know, where, where the team has grown and, and, and come to. And that's, that's a huge credit to, to your work, to your, to your passion. The other thing I think for, that I'm listening or hearing is the leadership that you, that you, that you seem to be having, you know, right here in your, in your team. You two are incredibly, well, not only well-spoken, but obviously leaders. Um, that's, that's apparent. So not only from what your coaches told us, but just from listening to the, the types of things that you're sharing and the, the heart in which you're, in which you're saying. So congratulations certainly to both of you for leading in an awesome year too.
Thank you.
Yeah, it's definitely becoming probably my favorite meeting of the year so far. Um, but not only to be able to congratulate all of you, but to see and hear from all of you. You know, um, we always enjoy when students get to come, um, particularly some of the younger ones are really cute, and they come in elementary years. But to hear, to see all of you now at the latter parts of your career here, and just the, the women, the men, and the people that you've all become is really, really neat as a part of, you know, this community and having done so well. So congratulations. I don't know if you were here, Tom. Back in my very first term, we actually approved volleyball as like a club team. Never existed here. Uh, Mr. Boyar just was here and presenting this idea to have a girls' volleyball. And so it might have been your first, or maybe just before you joined, but, so to see this, you know, come.
You're much older than I am anyways.
What's that?
You're much older than I am.
Yeah, yeah, right. He's been here forever. I took a little bit of a break. But, um, to see go from that, from this idea and a club team, like maybe a tryout, maybe there's some interest from girls in town to wanna do this, to what now it's come, and especially under your leadership. It's exciting to think about where it could be going. Um, so congratulations, and, uh, this is really fun.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think I was there.
I would just say, like, to everybody, this is just amazing. Like, to go to like the, sort of the favorite meeting, you're just, you are our community. And the, the breadth, the breadth and like the distance that, as long as the band's been together, the newer programs, like, you're all, it's just infectious. You guys are doing amazing things for our community, not just at school, but at home, that all the stands are filled. Um, all the, it's, it's not just your day jobs. It's like, it's everything you do. You do this and, and you do the academics. Um, it's just amazing. So, um, and I, we've said this before, in sort of when people, um, sort of share their experiences, but for everything that you're getting out of it, just know you're feeding right back into it. So when you talk about if the program is strong, you've, you've left it just this foundation, these like massive shoulders to stand on. Um, so I can only imagine they're gonna have success. Um, in the same way for the dance team. I mean, it's just gonna get built on, right? And the, and the band always does that. And so just thank you. Thank you for giving of yourselves your time. Um, that goes to the students and, and the educators.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone has a sign. Yeah, you can move to the lobby.
And I will say, I think it was a couple of weekends ago, I had the opportunity to see the high school soccer team play. And they came just one goal short of winning the, that final championship, but they were incredible. I mean, they, they're not here tonight with us, but I mean, they, they, like, it was so close up until that overtime, when, when unfortunately, they didn't win, so. In the final four, they won in PKs, and then they went to the championship against Oliver Ames. Yeah. And, and the player that scored the only goal to win one-nothing, um, was an MLS Next player. He was leaving, he's, he's not gonna play for the team, stayed in and hung in. He scored the old goal. He's an all-state player.
Didn't they win last year too, Oliver?
They did. They did. So they, they historically have a, a team there, but the boys made an amazing run. And, and we hope to have, um, Brendan Kent, the athletic director, along with the, the captains from the soccer team here as well to talk a little bit about this.
And the girls' cross-country one since our last meeting too.
Right, and, and there's just, you know, and, and, you know, someone made the point about, you know, hearing from the varsity athletes. And we've been reflecting quite a bit with Tom Bankard and, and Brendan Kent about, you know, this is, this senior class is a different group, and if you're in the hallways, you know, you'll see the, the connections that they don't, they only, not only have with one another, but with the younger students as well. I mean, it's really amazing. Um, and, and so you'll see when you come visit the high school, when you walk the halls, it feels very different, and that comes from the athletes, the coaches, and the relationships that are, that are happening. And just can't say enough about it. And so, um, yeah, we get to transition to our next topic. So, it's, uh, it is, it is a difficult, um, it's a difficult group to follow, right? It's a tough act to follow. It's true. Um, next up, we're welcoming, um, Colleen Dolan. Colleen Dolan is a retired special education director that works as a consultant with us on managing our title grants. And so, um, she works with myself and Kara. Colleen, uh, welcome. And so.
Thank you.
Colleen has been really just an amazing go-to person for us, um, with her experience and really helping us just really do a better job managing our grants and get all that we can out of our grants as well. And so, um, I can turn it over to you, Colleen. When you need a slide switch, so the slides are up on the screen here in studio?
Yes, I think we're all set.
And so if, if you'd like, whenever you need to switch a slide, you could just let us know, and Kara has the clicker, and we can just get right to it.
Great. Alright, are you seeing Wakefield Public Schools?
We are.
Great, that's a great start. Well, I- Well, I I know for a fact that this isn't gonna be exciting, as exciting as your last few presentations. And I've been sitting here thinking about how I can make Title One exciting. When you think of it in terms of dollars coming into the district for very little, you know, you, we don't have to do a lot to avail ourselves of this money. And it really helps in a lot of ways that I'll talk to you about tonight. So it is exciting, maybe not as exciting as the young athletes, but I get excited about it. So did the slide change for you?
We're on federal regulations, the links.
Okay.
Do you want to keep moving?
One more agenda.
So we're on slide two.
Oh yeah, we are. We're on an agenda.
Right, so I'm gonna talk to you tonight about what the priorities are, our funding over the last few years, what we do with the money at Wakefield Public Schools, our data teams, accountability and parent involvement. These are the priorities of Title One, strengthening strengthening the core programs, providing evidence-based programs, elevating the quality of instruction, and that comes with a lot of good professional learning which you're providing. And Title One is paying for a lot of this. And also involving parents and guardians as active partners in educating their children. This is a look at S of funding over the last few years. And I can recall when I was a special ed administrator that the dollars seemed to go be reduced every year. And and that has not been the case consistently. Um, we did get a bump up in twenty-three. Uh, but I do anticipate usually around March, we get a few thousand dollars more in Title One and a few hundred more in Title Two. So the numbers aren't bad and we're making the most of every dollar, I can assure you. In Wakefield, we use the school-wide program model. And there are many reasons for that, but we feel that this model allows us to reach more children and therefore that works. Um, what we've provided at the Title One schools are um, reading specialists at Woodville and Galvin, an adjustment counselor at um, the high school and therapeutic learning center teacher at Galvin. And I would love to tell you that this money pays for all of these, for the full position, but it does not. Um, it's probably between point two and point three FTE of each one of these positions. And I work very closely with Christine and Kara each year to um, look at the positions that we're funding and make sure that, you know, we're getting the best value for this money. We are also um, providing individual support to our students. So that's really our goal. We we looked at the targeted assistance model, but with that, we have to identify students at the beginning of the year. And as you know, there are transient populations coming in and out of town. So we like to be able to meet the kids when they're coming in, assess and make sure that we're teaching, we're supporting every struggling learner. Data teams at the um, Title One schools are key to everything that we do. They meet monthly and they look at all of the assessment data, including MCAS and all of the district data, informal data, behavioral data. And this team makes recommendations regarding what what do we need to change? How can we reach these students in a better way? How can we support them? And with that, the recommendations are made and we look at how we will spend the money for the following year. The team looks at best practices and how we can make sure that we're using those. This is where you can find the accountability data. Uh, hopefully there are some parents in the audience who want to take a look at this. Uh, there is, the report card is on the WPS website. And the district uses the report cards as one piece of data to help in these decisions of how to use the Title One funds. So just some of the things that we've done over the last few years. In addition to those positions, we've used Title Two A and Title Four money to fund some professional learning activities. Um, along with mentors and coaches, we have funded um, professional learning for illustrative math, for um, ex- the, ex- for the, expeditory learning language arts, for empower writing curriculum. This is a fabulous program. Um, it really starts with the very basics of writing. And it supports students in taking what's called a kernel sentence and building on that so that it really impacts writing skills in a positive way. I was really excited when Kara told me that the district was adopting this. Um, so with each of the curriculums that you're adopting, you know, you know, you're not just putting them in the classroom. You're doing a lot of thoughtful work, making sure that your teachers are all prepared to be able to teach these curriculums. Title Four has also funded an IT consultant over the last several years. And this is one of those, you know, the adage about teaching the man to fish rather than giving him a fish. So this IT consultant is working with staff to organize student data and make sure that it can be shared with teachers and parents in a really meaningful way. So you're looking at MCAS data, in district pro- progress monitoring and other um, assessments and making sure that the results are um, input in a way that will allow us to look at those results and make some thoughtful decisions based on that. So um, the teachers are using this, the administrative and curriculum leaders are using this on to look at how they might help teachers to shift instruction. If something's not working, we need to change it. We need to look at the way that this was taught, think about it at the data meetings and possibly figure out a better way to share this information with students. As far as family involvement, we encourage parents and family members to be involved in Title One. We haven't had a lot of involvement in the past. Uh, people are busy. We, last year, we did a presentation at each of the PTO meetings. And, you know, we we did have some um, feedback from the parents who were attending. But um, you know, we're hoping to gather more feedback. Um, people can provide feedback through the family engagement policy, attend conferences, um, ask your teacher how you can support, ask your child's teacher how you can support your child at home. And we'll be providing a parent survey at the end of April that we hope that um, parents will complete and send back uh, so that we'll have input for next year. And that's all, it wasn't exciting, but it was concise and efficient, hopefully. Any questions, concerns, comments?
Just a quick comment, uh, kind of reiterating a conversation you and I've had before, Kara. I definitely appreciate the additional work going in to get the data into the hands of families. I think everything we can do to help uh, let parents know where their kids are, helps them to know, you know, is there anything else that can be done to help a kid who's struggling or is my kid excelling or how are they progressing? And also that we're we're trying to uh, provide these benchmarks uh, for all kids, not just kids that are struggling. So definitely appreciate that additional work going in to help get that data in the hands of families.
Um, I, sort of a, Colleen, a question about you had mentioned in terms of uh, the Title One funding. You, um, the specialists in different Title One schools, um, you commented out on it being funding like a, you know, a point two or a point three in an FTE. Are there other areas where that funding relates to sort of a personnel position? I know just uh, you had a IT consultant. Is that, that it actually sort of funds a position in the district or is it more of a overarching contract? Okay.
That's a contractor.
Oh nice, okay.
That funds a contractor who comes into the district.
From the analytics platform, um, Paul Manuti. So he's been doing a lot of work behind the scenes, just helping um, to organize our data um, into just more manageable formats. Um, mainly our curriculum coordinators have been working closely with them, but now our principals, I know Megan Webb has had a couple of meetings with him this year. Um, just looking at different ideas um, for how to just present academic data, attendance data, um, however it's needed. And then he is starting to help us think about different ways to get that data into parent, in it. Just, it's all about presenting in a, in a manageable way that people can understand. So he he's really helpful with us on that, he's working with us.
Does he meet with with our technology group in terms of, because are they the system owners of the applications that we use for sort of data management?
No.
They are not.
They are not.
Oh.
So Paul, Paul Manuti is, he is a consultant that creates, right? So he he.
Maybe you missed my question. I meant like our data, our tech team, they are the application owners. They they sort of manage the backend, the users are educators.
Right, right.
They're the system owners.
Right.
So would Paul meet with sort of our system owners to help sort of? Does he meet with our system owners? Does he meet with our tech team to sort of talk about our platforms?
Through the curriculum coordinators, kind of saying, hey, we want to do this. How do we do it?
Yeah.
Or can you help us get this information so we can compile it? You know, it's it's more of like that kind of communication right now, but.
So it's project, like it's task based, yes.
So as an example, like all the data was put together for the MCAS presentation, did that come from Paul or was that something that?
Some of it did.
Okay.
Yeah, some of it did, it was a combination.
So one of the things that that I don't want to miss the opportunity to bring this up for the committee and anyone that might be watching. The the finance subcommittee has been working with the FinCom liaisons from last spring. And we've talked about, are there ways for us to offset costs, right? And so Colleen has been instrumental in working with Colleen, excuse me, not Colleen. Colleen's been instrumental in working with Christine um, to kind of, to to kind of look at how we can use Title One funds to kind of backfill parts of salaries that can relate in Title One schools, right? So it's a, it's a creative way, you know, and different districts prioritize these funds differently, right? And so, but the way that Colleen has helped us prioritize these funds actually is, was exactly what we've talked about at at the finance subcommittee and with FinCom, right? So that's a concrete example of that. Um, and something that we can talk more about as we get into the budget season. But um, you know, Colleen has really been a great partner for Christine and for us on the finance side.
It does, it certainly seems like it covers more of a myriad of of buckets than maybe I had thought initially. Um, so I I appreciate the presentation, it's um, very informative.
So the way I saw the presentation, we have three Title One schools in Wakefield, right? Woodville, Galvin, the high school.
Woodville, Galvin, the high school. Dolbear was in, but now they're out again.
Oh, so I was gonna, that, what is the process to?
So it it's based on uh, population of students, right? And socioeconomic needs and demographics of that school. So that's what qualifies a school as a quote-unquote Title One school. So our, you know, so our three, right now, we have three Title One schools, Woodville, Galvin and the high school.
Is that assessed every year to see if, or is it a?
It is a moving target, yes.
Yeah, annually.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
It is, it is a bit of a moving target for us. And there's always a a concern, um, because, you know, a school that might benefit in a year might not benefit the following year. So it's a little tricky um, and and kind of managing funds. But I would argue that um, we've never done it as good as we're doing it right now.
Yep.
So, well, thank you for that, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congrats to all those teams.
So we're good, moving on to our next topic. I think we're good, Colleen, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we, I can turn it over to Kara?
Sure.
Yeah, I'll just wait for the next um.
Slide deck?
Slide deck to come up, the supplementary curriculum resource.
I would have said, thank you to Christine also. I noticed that she was on the call and said she's also sort of instrumental in that work and, you know.
Definitely.
So thank you to her as well.
Thank you, Christine.
Thank you, everyone. Thanks to Colleen, again, she's been um, fabulous working with, thank you.
All right, so we're going to present, one of the topics that came up that was of interest to the committee was our, just some of the supplementary curriculum resources we're using. Mainly the digital resources. So we we've presented on these before, but we'll give a quick high-level overview. I know you got the um, slides earlier, not as much timing as you probably hoped. But um, I have Val Dryan in here, is our elementary humanities curriculum coordinator. Val was also the the elementary STEM curriculum coordinator before, so she can really speak to both math and ELA. And then Margaret Messier is here with me tonight, our five through twelve ELA curriculum coordinator. So we'll just kind of go over mainly ST Math, Lexia, and then some of the secondary resources um, that Margaret will highlight. And then open it up to questions. Does that cover what you're looking for? Okay, great. All right, so um, I will, I guess I have control over the clicker, all right, it's working now. So Val, if you want to just jump in, this is a slide that has the video. Um, we're not gonna show the video, but we just thought it was a nice way to capture uh, the program. And we've sent that out as well.
All right, I can jump in here. So so basically like Kara said, um, we kind of went back to like review what the question was um, from the last meeting. And it it, the question was framed in how we're using the digital tools to evaluate students. Um, so we just kind of wanted to start off with saying that these are not the primary tools we use to evaluate our students. It's just an additional um, data point that we do look at. And these tools are actually instructional tools as well. They're not just, uh, like, so like we have like iReady, our assessment, uh, Dibbles, our assessment data that we get data from, not instruction. And then ST Math and Lexia are what we use um, as the supplementary curriculums at the elementary level. Um, so as Kara said, there's a lot of slides here, we put a lot of information in, but we're not really gonna talk about all the points on the slides. We just want you to have that information ahead of time. Um, the key points here, um, starting with ST Math and the talking points are actually very similar for Lexia. So I'll kind of just refer back to that when we get to that, is that these are standards-aligned supplementary resources. Um, both ST Math and Lexia um, are backed by data um, that has shown growth in state um, performance data. And for ST Math, we actually had a um, uh, MCAS and iReady correlation study done um, in the last few years by like, like real data people, right? Not, not us internally, but like, um, like just data experts that, you know, normed things and um, controlled for things. And we actually saw within our own Wakefield data correlations between ST Math usage and our MCAS score improvements over the last few years. Um, so this, again, we just want to emphasize, it's a digital tool. Um, it does give us some information about students, but it is not independently used to make decisions about their needs or their services. Um, teachers use this um, a lot, so we are able to align it with our core curriculum. So our ST Math objectives are aligned with our IM curriculum unit. Teachers can individualize assignments um, for students on these curriculum. So this is another way we differentiate. Um, these are used at a variety of times, so like during the wind block, when we're differentiating, um, to meet students where they're at. And uh, one way we differentiate is by assigning objectives. But another way is that ST Math is actually um, able to work at the student's pace. So a student can be working through a puzzle um, at like more quickly or slowly depending on where they're at in grasping the content. Um, the picture on the slide here, Marguerite added this for us. It was um, the students at Dolbear in the third grade. Um, we piloted after going to an ST Math PD last year, um, this um, ST Math, my god, what's it called? ST Math Helper, Gigi Helper. Um, and basically the, these were kids that had already mastered um, certain objectives and they got to choose to be a Gigi Helper for the week, like that was like something they earned to do.
Gigi's the Penguin, I think you know, okay.
Oh, sorry, I forgot to say this. Not, that's, my kids love Gigi the Penguin, they have it too. Um, but uh, so the Gigi Helpers um, are kids that maybe had like already been a little bit ahead on a puzzle. And so they um, wear this special badge, they get trained on how to support their friends if they have a question um, in like, through questioning strategies. So not like showing them how to do the puzzle or giving them the answer, but asking them, what have you tried? And um, tell me what that, what you saw in that replay and stuff like that. So it's really focused on um, problem solving and executive functioning skills um, and can be individualized. It also can be used as an instructional tool um, through what they call puzzle talk. So it's kind of like a number talk, if you've heard of that, where you show a puzzle and um, talk through strategies with a student. Um, so then moving on to Lexia, um, again, similar to ST Math, it's a standards-aligned supplementary resource. Um, they, this one focuses a lot on foundational reading skills. Um, and then also advanced literacy skills, all K to four, um, we use this. And Margaret's gonna talk about the middle school component of this in a minute. Um, we use it as a supplementary resource to our core curriculum. So we have EL for K four for our core literacy curriculum. And then um, foundations and Haggerty and K two and foundations in grade three. Um, so the, this again is another, it's based in the science of reading, it's aligned to the state standards. Um, similar to ST Math, um, students are, teachers are able to create assignments, but there's also an auto placement feature. So um, students can take this really quick little assessment that then. So students can take this really quick little assessment that then gives, gives them learning activities aligned to the current skills that, that, that shows. And then there's also opportunities for teachers to use additional resources from there that are not on the platform. So it's not always online either. So they have what they call Lexia Skill Builders. So as a student is working their way through the program, depending on what level they're at, there are skill builders that they can use for extra practice. So sometimes teachers might use those during a wind block or at another time where they're small group instruction. And this is just another, another slide showing the data and results based on growth across the year. Was that it?
I think you, I think you covered a lot of that. Yeah, no, thank you.
Yeah.
And, and I think, I just wanted to add, I think you've heard that Val's just been instrumental when she was the STEM Curriculum Coordinator too through COVID. Just really helping us to narrow down when COVID was happening and we were talking about, you know, remote learning and asynchronous resources. Just trying, there were so many different resources getting thrown at school districts. So I just want to credit the curriculum coordinator team with really just doing a thorough job. Just kind of sorting through everything that was being thrown at us and, and really taking advantage of grant opportunities. This was, ST Math in particular was heavily endorsed by Jesse, especially during COVID. And we, we were able to be on the receiving end of a lot of grant money to get it off the ground. And then I think we've continued to see just some positive results and kept with it even post-COVID. Thanks.
Yeah, and Kara, just to add to that, through, through that whole grant and the PD and training stuff, that, they actually have you develop what you, they call ST Math Champions. But it's a teacher leader in each building that is trained and provided with support over the years of that initial grant. So we actually now have, we've already gone through the first three years of that training. And we have school-based teacher leaders that really kind of lead the charge of each building with support from Margaret and Lindsay. And one last thing I realized in the talking points that I did not share was just thinking about like the, the, I know there's been back and forth questions about screen time and screen time at school. But I think what we wanted to emphasize here is that this is, the way that this is used in the classroom is really to support their learning and even just thinking about like how they have those, how they have the Gigi Helpers. They're really learning how to critically think and problem solve using a computer, which is something that we all do every day, like a lot often in our jobs. So I think it's really not just like playtime on the computer. There really is a piece of student interaction and teacher and student interaction there as well.
Thanks, Val. And Margaret, if you want to jump in here, we're just, oh, sorry, go ahead.
In terms of our licensing for these products, can families use them after hours for their kid? Or are they only for use when they're assigned? I know, I thought we had a conversation where there was like a discussion about, I think it was IXL, and I forget whether, where the discussion was. But it was one of those other learning tools. And I, I was just curious what type of, you know?
For the, for the digital resources that we're endorsing that are aligned to our curriculum, yes. Val, you could speak more if I'm, if I'm saying anything wrong here, but they're all linked to their clever account, which they can access at home. And sometimes teachers are assigning them at home. Is that, is that a fair statement?
Yes, that's a, that's a hundred percent correct, Kara. So they can access both ST Math and Lexia at home through their clever accounts. There's no, there's no like time limit on that. Like it's not something that can just be used during the school day.
Yeah, so that may be something that we're, we're paying for. It may be worth just promoting if any parent, you know, wants to, I don't know, challenge their kid to do more work because they're bored or something, that these tools are available. I mean, they are there, so just worth promoting it. Well, I mean, I, I once paid for my kids to do Kumon as an example. So it's an, you know, you could get a similar experience at no cost.
Absolutely. We're thinking about doing a, you know, and again, it's just subject to whoever comes, but a parent university presentation as well. In, in spring just to highlight other options. Margaret, do you want to jump in on the?
Can I just ask, in terms of like those, because I know that they were sort of born out of, out of sort of the COVID and the remote learning. I think of that space, they, they really excelled like on individual student learning, on sort of, you know, getting the, the curriculum sort of to students with less sort of teacher-directed input. And they excelled in that. And so I think that was part of what I'm wondering is now that we're back to a, you know, a full in-person, like we're back to normal school. How do those applications sort of fit into the, the everyday? And, and part of it is sort of to screen time. You know, do we, we probably have more screen time in classes now than we did, you know, four years ago.
So Steve, oh, sorry, Steve, where were you?
Go ahead, Val. Yeah, go ahead.
Talk to that a little bit. So in, during COVID, when we use them, really like, so ST Math has been around for a really long time. It, it so has Lexia. And, and both of them are tools that are best, their best, their best usage is when you actually have teacher support with them. So in, during COVID, when we didn't have teacher support, we were doing our best. We use them like in elementary, when we have the half-day schedules, we use them for our asynchronous time as our like best option at that time, because ideally you would have been doing it during the school day. But at that time, in our schedules, we only had, I forget if it was 35 or 40 minutes of math and literacy each day in those half-day schedules. And so there wasn't enough time to actually use those during a half-day like that with teacher support. So, you know, we would actually be seeing better results from them with that teacher support and that student interaction in, when they're used in school. So does that kind of answer what you were asking?
It does.
And in terms of the schedule, did you, did you catch that it's oftentimes, it varies, especially at the elementary level. But we have our, our core minutes, ST Math is built into the core minutes for math. Val, correct me if I'm wrong, there's 16 minutes of?
Not, not anymore because of center time. So then the way ST Math is used now, there are, so we redid the Math Scope and Sequence prior to this year. Because one of the pieces of feedback we got from teachers over the course of the year was need a little more time with flex days for like the ability to reteach or pull small groups or, you know, give kids more time to, to grasp the content. So we built flex days into the Math Scope and Sequence. So ST Math is used during flex days. It's used in conjunction with centers, which sometimes, which a lot of centers will happen on the flex days, but also during the wind block. So wind block is a time where these are probably most used right now. And that is partially also because they can be differentiated. So not every student in the classroom would necessarily be on ST Math or Lexia at the same time. You might have one group working on ST Math and one group with the teacher and one group working on Lexia and one group independent reading and one group out with the reading specialist. So like there's different things happening during that block. And so that's kind of more how it's embedded in the school day now.
And the wind blocks are typically a half hour?
Thirty minutes, yeah.
Thirty minutes, yeah. So just if you were thinking of when, when it's built into the day.
And the usage, as far as ST Math, there is like recommended usage across the course of the week. It's 16 minutes for K to one, but that's across the course of the whole week. So it might be they do 20 minutes three days in that week. So they're not necessarily on their a half hour every single day during their wind block. It's differentiated by, by the different days and the different student needs.
Thanks, Val. All right. So Margaret's just going to jump in with a couple of other digital resources at secondary, five through 12.
Yes, I'll be quick because a lot of mine kind of just is a continuation of what Val was talking about. But the first one that's different is Common Lit. And this is a tool that has really evolved over the years and has been super helpful for teachers. It focuses mostly on reading comprehension, but we use it as our beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year assessment because it assesses students in relation to all of the reading informational and reading literature standards. And actually just, I think Stephen, you asked the question about how we work with Paul Manuti from Wakefield Analytics. And I'm actually really proud of the work that we've done with him over the past two to three years because this year we finally have a platform where Donna, and this kind of answers your other question. Donna Cushman will export to him all of the, the English teachers and their rosters. And then he'll actually create it so that for our writing benchmarks, teachers get a list of all of their students. And throughout the year, they can enter their formative and summative writing benchmarks for each type of writing. And then this year, for the first time, I've been able to export to him their Common Lit data for beginning of the year, middle of the year, and end of the year. And I've also been able to send him our spring MCAS data. So teachers can look at a student and kind of get a full picture of them from our, not a full picture because they're not getting the anecdotal classroom evidence, but kind of get a data view of them as far as how they're performing on their reading comprehension benchmarks, on their writing benchmarks, and on their MCAS. And they can look back at them from previous years. And it is, it's a great way for them to be able to have conversations about student progress. So that, that's been hugely helpful, at least in the English department, getting that off the ground. And this is kind of where we're at the first point, where we're seeing kind of a more full picture of students as readers and writers based on their benchmark data. So we use Common Lit because it's aligned to the state standards, the same reasons why we use the other programs. It's research-based. One of the great things is that it provides target lessons. So if you can look at a student and see they're struggling with a particular standard, Common Lit has already built lessons that you can deliver to students or just thousands of reading passages for grade levels that can connect with a unit, thematic unit that a teacher is already doing in their classroom. So it doesn't seem like something separate, but it seems like something very organic to the already built-in curriculum. And something I want to stress about all of the resources that we use is that they're a supplement to the hands-on instruction that's going on in the classroom to enhance it or to provide intervention for areas where students are struggling. So I kind of already talked about this. And another way we use it is for targeted lessons to use for students during the wind block that we've just started at the middle school. At the high school, they use it just to pair with novels and other things that they're doing in the classroom. So Lexia Power Up, I'm not going to talk about this a lot because Val already talked about Core Five, but it is the same principles as Core Five, but it's tailored more for middle school students. And you can see the difference in the graphics and the types of questions and the way that they're prompted. And again, this is used as a supplemental tool that they use sometimes during their wind block time. But we have in our curriculum guides that we designed, expectations for each grade level. Each grade level is doing, it has three strands, a grammar strand, a word study strand, and a comprehension strand. So each grade level is doing between 20 to 30 minutes in each strand over a six-day cycle. And they've decided whether they're doing that as warm-up or homework. But it's something I just want to emphasize that especially students who need to use it the most, it's always something that they can be doing at home. And for students that are doing well and need a challenge, there are skill builders provided that they can do to kind of enhance the learning that they're already having and kind of get them to the next level. And so I should say we're just using that for grades five through 12. And then MEMBEAN is the vocabulary program that we use at the high school, kind of in lieu of those. I think we all remember them. I remember them from my student and teaching career, those orange vocabulary books where you copied the words, memorized the definitions. MEMBEAN is kind of a more hands-on program where kids are given words based on kind of an assessment they do to start at the level where they are and their words, and we get this question a lot, that they are going to see on the SATs, that they are going to see in different areas throughout their education. And the best part of this is that it's highly differentiated. So you can be in a classroom full of students and they're all accessing different words at an appropriate level for them. And there's also a lot of, with all of these programs, I should mention, accommodations that can be turned on for some students and not for other students to just make sure that every student is getting what they need, how they need it. So it really makes the job of the teacher easier and enhances both the challenge of the student without providing the frustration that sometimes comes when everyone's getting the same thing. So.
Thank you, Margaret. I think you covered all the rest of that too. Yeah, we had more on the slides that we'll talk about. If there's any other, any other questions?
That was great.
So, so with Common Lit, you can, let's say that you have a student that is struggling at a certain level of reading comprehension. So Common Lit can, oops, sorry.
Yeah.
Chips are green. So, so Common, okay. So, so with, so with Common Lit, you can actually kind of target pretty easily. We have it at my school too, and it's pretty easy to, you know, find the theme that you're working on. And then you can, you know, adjust the reading level and it's very useful. I was wondering if that's possible with ST Math. Is it possible to, like, let's say that, you know, my kid's bad at fractions. Like, is it possible for the parent to be able to be like, boom, let's work on this skill that my, my kid's really bad at? Or, or can a teacher do that as well? Because just like what I've seen with ST Math, I just see the Penguin, I just see how they, like, they move up a level. But I, I don't see an ability to be like, all right, my kid's good at that. My kid's really bad at that. So why don't we just work on this? Well, with Common Lit, it's just, and Lexia too, it's kind of more easy to do that. I didn't know if ST Math allowed that flexibility.
Go ahead, Val.
So yes, sorry, did you want me to answer that, Kara?
Yeah, go ahead. Yeah.
I didn't know if you were starting to answer. I can't see you right now.
No, great.
So yes, with ST Math, it's possible, like we were saying, teachers can assign objectives. So if there's something that, like if you want to be using ST Math with your child at home and supporting them with areas where they need some more support, you can definitely reach out to their teacher and they can assign objectives. And basically it shows up, you know, when you log in and there's like the house and the map on the, on the main screen. Like they go in and like the Penguin shows up at the, the entryway, and then there's a house and a map. So there's, the map is what they typically do in school, but if they have assigned objectives, they would click on the house. And so they can do that at home. They don't always have assigned objectives because it depends on what the teacher has decided. So if there's some, if, that is totally possible to do though.
I just have a question on the MEMBEAN. Why aren't we starting that at the, at the Galvin?
Well, right now, the word study piece of Lexia kind of covers what MEMBEAN does at the high school level at kind of a more advanced level. So the reason that we're doing, it would just kind of be redundant to be doing MEMBEAN and Lexia at the middle school because Lexia has that word study piece that covers that and allows kids to kind of be wherever they are in that word study. And then when they get to the high school, they transition into MEMBEAN.
Okay. Thank you.
But all, and Margaret, again, correct me if I'm wrong, MEMBEAN, Common Lit, and Lexia Power Up were all kind of analyzed and recommended out of the ELA review for secondary five through 12. So they had a chance to look at everything and make those thoughts.
Yes. Middle school actually piloted MEMBEAN and they thought it was just like, first, it was just too much for the middle school kids. So we had this one program that encompassed those three areas. They liked that a lot better. Whereas the high school teachers were like, we feel good about the other ones. We just really want this vocabulary focus. But a great thing about MEMBEAN too is if a student gets to ninth grade and they're not able to access the high school level MEMBEAN words, they can be accessing kind of upper middle school words until they're ready to access those ninth grade words. Whereas like upper, you know, 11th to 12th graders can be accessing like college level words and beyond. So it's really nice because it's not limiting in that way at all.
Great. Does anyone have any questions or comments? Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Val. Thank you, Margaret.
Thanks, everyone.
See you later.
Thank you so much.
Zachary? Yeah, can you tell, we've got to be quick. I'm trying. They did a great job condensing, but trying to get the information out, but yeah.
That's great.
So hopefully that covered all the questions. Great.
Helpful.
Yeah, for, for future, I would say the information should trump the clock, if, just as a general rule.
Okay.
So don't worry about having to rush.
Okay. Great.
So Margaret, Margaret has been amazing piloting lessons in classrooms. And we've seen her piloting lessons and we've also seen her partnering with other teachers where, you know, she's supporting from the side and modeling from the front. And so I, I think in terms of the high school instruction, I think that there's, there's kind of a little bit of a shift happening with the coordinators as well in regard to the coaching piece and the instruction that, that is really kind of called for with, with some of the changes in curriculum. So it's really, really positive. You know, we were in a Bridget Haggerty's class and it was amazing. And she was, she did just a great job.
It was, you know, we were kind of standby people, you know, but overall she was, she was putting it out there. Just that, that willingness to be vulnerable, trying something new. She invited, she kind of put a mass email out to several of our colleagues, if anyone wants to stop by and trying, you know, this. I think it was a sequence frame from the Empower Training. And it was great. And I think there's just more and more of an interest among our, our teaching staff to, you know, get out, see each other. It's the best way to learn, is learning from your colleagues and just seeing things in action. So it's really just, yeah, really nice culture shifts, I think, for sure.
Really great to see. And it's happening across the curriculum areas. You know, it's, it's happening, word language is another space where, you know, the coordinators that are really having remarkable success are just figuring out how to insert themselves into instruction with other teachers, right? Like in a space where, how can I help? Would you like me to model something? Can I come in and just, you know, watch you teach? Can we have a conversation? But this idea of, of- Can we have a conversation? But this idea of, you know, can I support you from the side? Can I support you from the front? How can I support, can I support you from a curriculum standpoint? It's being flexible and just thinking about coaching to best meet the needs of the students that are in front of the teachers, right? So there's one thing to talk about, high-quality curricular materials, which is important. But what the teachers are doing and how they're making shifts to adapt to the students that are in front of them, that's, you know, that's the grail, right? That's what we're really shooting for, and they're really, they're really starting to hit their stride. And so, you know, we hope to show you that when we invite, you know, school committee members to visit schools like we did last year. And so we could talk more about that. I just have two final, or just a few final comments, and then I can kind of turn it back over to the chair. We just wanted to let everybody know that might be watching, including the school committee, that next week's CPAC Social is going to be rescheduled. Next week's CPAC Social is going to be rescheduled to January because next week is kind of a packed week. On Wednesday, on December 6th, the high school is welcoming eighth-grade parents. They're having an eighth-grade parent night, and the high school administration has tried to make that earlier this year because it's also in the window of, you know, at a time when people might be looking at private schools. And we really want to compete, you know, and kind of get out there and really show what the high school has to offer. And I think, you know, the athletic, the athletic teams and the extracurriculars that you saw tonight is just, just a part of, I think, what the high school has to offer. So I think the administrative team is excited to share with eighth-grade parents next Wednesday. And on Thursday, the 7th, if I have my day is correct, Thursday, the 7th, is the first night of Hanukkah. And on the common, there'll be a lighting of the menorah. So just some, just some calendar items that we just want to bring to people's attention. Other than that, that's it for my comments this evening, and thank you very much for the time.
Thank you. I don't have any comments. Do you want to share any negotiations update?
I would love to. There isn't much to report in terms of teacher negotiations. We were slated to meet after our last school committee meeting two weeks ago, but unfortunately, a number of sort of negotiating team members that comprise the group were ill. So we had to, we ended up having to cancel that meeting. The next meeting that's on the books, as far as I know, everyone is on the mend, so things are good. So the next meeting that's on the books is December 11th, and then followed by that would be December 18th. And that's kind of what we have.
Yeah, thank you.
Hopefully more to report later.
Christine, do we have any budget, is she still with us? Budget items? Don't have any gifts. I think we have any. Hi.
Hi.
How are you?
No, there's nothing. Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Nice to listen. No, there's no guests tonight.
Okay, thank you. Subcommittee reports, finance and facilities, Tom?
So we haven't met since our last meeting, but we're looking at putting together a meeting for next Monday.
Great, thank you. Labor and personnel? Mr. Ingalls?
We're, aside from, no, that's it.
Okay.
My previous comments.
Student Services, Ms. Colleran is not with us tonight? We had a meeting. Do you want to give an update? Do you want me to?
Sure, I can give a quick update. So we were, the main topic we've been focused on was schools, has been school start times. And we certainly reached a point that I'd say requires kind of a little bit of a pause. There's definitely some struggles with changing around school start times. We have a fixed amount of buses in the district. It has a pretty significant impact to try to change around the school start times. Would make for a pretty late start at the elementary level. So at this point, we think we're gonna kind of let this, you know, kind of sit on the side for a little bit, pick up some other items to work on in the subcommittee, and maybe revisit this one a little later. Go ahead, Stephen.
Is there any thought to collecting any information from parents or teachers or like doing any sort of working group while you're?
At this point, no. I don't think any of us loved the proposal on the table enough to even push it forward to ask for significant comments. So I think if we had a proposal, like, wow, we love this thing, let's get some feedback on it. And I'm just speaking for myself, Amy, but I, you know, I don't think any of us in that last meeting were like, wow, we absolutely love how these hours work out. And financially, it just, we're not gonna go add a bunch of buses in the district. And that, you know, every district we looked at is unique. Some have no buses. Some have schools that are like a high school and a middle school right next to one another. So we're, we don't have the same restrictions in terms of like timing between school drop-offs and pickups that many of the other communities we're looking at are dealing with. So, you know, we still would like to solve this problem. I know it was important to Dr. Lyons over there to get a later start for our high schoolers. I just think we need a little more time to kind of think this over, and we're just not ready to rush it forward, at least as of the last meeting.
Yeah, we have, our next meeting is actually with Dr. Lyons and Kara, just to get feedback from the administration to see what our next step should be. Yeah. But did you have a question, Kevin?
No, it was pretty much what Stephen was asking.
Yeah. So when we say a pause, it's just that we need to go back to administration to see where can we go from here? Because we know it's important to a lot, a lot of students and parents at the high school level. So we'll have more to report at our next meeting, or is the meeting? I think our next meeting is after that, our next meeting.
I don't have the date in front of me. It's fine.
It's okay, but we will have more updates.
The 12, Judy saying the 12.
It's the 12th, December 12th. Are you talking about the subcommittee?
Yeah.
Oh, the 16th of this month.
Yeah, so it's after our next meeting, so more to come in 2024. Thank you. Policy and Communications.
Yeah, we met last Tuesday, and we talked about crafting some language around homework guidelines. So we basically talked about, you know, basically the definition of homework, what appropriate homework should be, but also guidelines around how much time it should take based on grade level. So Dr. Lyons is gonna, is gonna provide some language that we're gonna look at next session, next meeting. So we'll further discuss, and then if we agree to like the language, we might have something for the broader committee to look at in the future. Also, we sent, our policy book is being looked at by the MASC, and they gave us their recommended revisions to Section J in our policy book. And Dr. Lyons gave us the revisions, we looked at it, and we talked about it, and we proposed some, you know, minor tweaks, like just mainly grammatical. And so I don't know if I have to make a motion for this.
To lay it on the table, yeah.
We have to put it on the table today so we can potentially vote on it in two weeks.
Okay. Do you want to make that motion?
Sure, I'll make a motion to, so Dr. Lyons shared it with, I think, everybody, right?
Section J.
Yeah, Section J, yeah.
So make a motion to, you know, for, to put Section J on the table for us all to look at, and then for us to review, so we can hopefully have a vote in our next open meeting. Second meeting with the whole committee.
Second.
Okay, a motion's made and seconded. Is there any discussion?
Actually, I had a question. In looking at the drafting that was shown today, it seemed like some parts were still under construction. We're just assuming that it'll be sort of fully.
I think the draft that you got should be completed. If there are things that, if that look like it.
Notations under like parts.
Then we can, we can make those edits.
Okay, I'm just making sure that we're like, as it's part of the discussion, that would, would the work be done in two weeks?
It will be.
Great, thank you.
Any other discussion? Seeing none, all of us in favor? No one opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you. Liaison reports. Yes?
The Human Rights Commission met last week. The majority of the time was spent talking about the flag policy, which was discussed for about an hour last night at town council. And then the rest of the meeting, one of the main topics was an event they're planning at the Galvin on January 15th for Martin Luther King Jr., Coretta Scott King celebration.
Thank you. For the Environmental Sustainability Committee, they, the candy wrapper drive is over. That was the first time that we had, no, we, but they put collection boxes at each school, and that seemed successful. It's probably something they'll do again next year as it will momentum build, like the collecting of the pumpkins. And then there was a article, is that what you would call it, at a town meeting?
It's an article.
Is that what? Yeah, is that an article?
Yeah, yes, articles.
So they had educated the community and put that forth, and that was, after much discussion, it was voted to pass. So those are the only two updates I have for that.
One thing that directs to our high school building project is to know that even under the new stretch code, our current, the high school build is compliant.
Yes.
And actually, the new stretch code will perhaps give us some money back from MSBA.
Perhaps, but not 3%.
No, it was supposed to be three points, but I, you have to do some fancy math.
Anyway, even if it's five bucks.
You missed it. You missed all the points. Our next school committee meeting is Tuesday, December 12th, our next and only meeting, the last meeting of the year. Everyone should attend. It's Tuesday, December 12th, and it's back at 7 o'clock. Any school committee comments? You can mention any.
Are we, are we comments or future?
Well, I was gonna do that after comments, because I forgot about it.
It was maybe gonna be wrapped up for my comment. Well, okay, so for comment, thanks for everyone who came out. That was amazing. Since there's just so many, and it was, it's so many more kids that were just here. Just knowing that that happens across our whole district is amazing, so I love to see it. Which sort of ties into, I had a question about maybe a future agenda item. I have a recent Galvin student, grades came out, and I was surprised to find out that honor roll sounds like it's being phased out. Am I correct in that assumption?
So this is my understanding.
If it is, I feel like I missed a memo, and I'm sure that there's good thought behind it. And I would, I would love to know sort of what the educational space is.
But they only do honor roll, correct me if I'm wrong, for the upperclassmen, seventh and eighth.
It's four-star generals for fifth and sixth.
But then at one of the community calls, Megan, the Galvin, it was the last community call, you could see it was alluded to in the presentation, and I specifically asked, and she said this year is probably the last year of honor roll.
That, I know that, just conversations I've been involved in, I don't want to, you know, say that I know 100%, but I have been in conversations where I know it's been brought up with the instructional leadership team at Galvin in terms of the honor roll and how it's currently working, and are there other ways to highlight student achievement? But there's been no decisions made yet, so as far as right now, they're gonna continue with what has been happening. But, correct, conversations have started around. Is this the best way to go about things? But I don't know where, I don't know anything other than that, that it's been brought up as a topic of conversation.
One of the big takeaways I got from Ms. Webb on the community call was just how do you, if you have a child that's made amazing progress year over year, like they're an EL student and this, they've made just tremendous progress, how do you celebrate that progress? Maybe the honor roll isn't the right way to celebrate them. But yeah, what I heard was it would be here for this year, and then for next year, they were perhaps gonna revisit some other way of student achievement recognition.
So I think it should be an agenda item when, at some point.
If there's a change, for sure.
But well before the change, I don't see why they can't have an honor roll and another thing to highlight students. And I think it's just the Galvin, not the high school, or is it conversations happening at the high school?
It's just the Galvin.
Okay, so it's just the Galvin. So more to come, right? As Doug would say.
Yeah.
Okay, correct.
Communication on the front end during, after, follow-up, yeah.
And so today was the first day of yonder, so I know because my kid brought his pouch home. I was surprised he got a pouch. He doesn't have a phone, but he's got a pouch, so he seems excited.
He can decorate.
He will not close the thing because he's like, I don't know where to get it unlocked. I'm like, well, it's probably because you don't have a phone. You don't have to worry about such things. So he said, yes, they gave me one anyway because they said maybe I'll have a phone in sixth or seventh grade. I said, well, you won't, but we could put it in the cold storage or something.
Maybe you can use it.
Ah, maybe.
School committee meeting.
Okay, so from, I hadn't heard anything in the negative, so hopefully sort of it was a smooth rollout. And I didn't so much as hear the like sort of pickups or that the schedule was interrupted as maybe it was done. So hopefully it's a smooth rollout.
I've heard it went very smoothly.
I've just seen the communication, like the administration's been sending out to staff just reminders and please be aware of this and please model this behavior. So it seems to have gone well. We didn't, yeah, I was waiting to see.
I thought, we haven't gotten any negative feedback and hearing from the administration. They reported, and hearing from some teachers, they reported that it went pretty well. And I do know that there are magnets everywhere to unlock pouches. So, and I know that that was one of the things that people were worried about, so, so far, so good.
One of the questions that kept coming up, and I'm sorry, I haven't really been following the communications. Did they decide to put the Apple Watches in the pouches, or it's just phones?
I believe it's all electronics, earbuds.
For some reason, the message I saw said AirPods and phones. It did not say watches. I don't know why, because I thought watches were included, but the communication that was in the weekly thing did not say watches.
I know they were going back and forth about it.
So I don't know.
If your phone is shut off in a pouch, probably, your Apple Watch is probably not gonna.
It depends if your Apple Watch has direct cell service or not.
No, no, it actually depends on if your, if your Apple Watch knows the Wi-Fi.
Yeah, that too.
Anyway, that was a question parents kept asking. Any other comments? Or future agenda items? We'll just bundle this all, so we'll wrap up, we'll call it. Seeing none, do we have a motion?
We do. Move that the school committee adjourn its meeting of Tuesday, November 28th, 2023.
Second.
A motion's been made and seconded, edited, discussion. Seeing none, all of us in favor? None opposed, passes unanimously. Thank you.